Good evening. The Finance Committee is called to order, and we only have one item on the agenda. Award quote 23-06, Storm Pond retrofit projects. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for recommendation to award a quote for design and construction management of storm pond retrofit projects. The city of West Bend is covered under the MS4 permit that we get through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And as part of this permit, we have to meet some goals to limit the total maximum daily loads of various things that may be released through storm water in the waters of the state, including total suspended solids, phosphorus, and bacteria. Last year, we hired short Elliot Hendrickson, S.E.H., to create a citywide model and figure out some solutions for the city to implement in order to meet that goal. Those solutions were prioritized and included in the five-year plan with the start of construction next year. So this year, we put a request for proposals to hire somebody to design the retrofit of three ponds, four ponds actually, in the city. And we received one proposal for those. I have to say that we used the DOT list of consultants. That includes 120 firms. And so we sent about 300 emails to those firms because we have multiple individuals in the firms. And this is the only response we received. We received two other responses of firms that could not propose, send us a proposal, but expressed interest in future RFPs. So long story short, we have this proposal from S.E.H., and they are already under an umbrella master agreement with the city. And their proposal is to add supplemental letter to that agreement. So we're recommending to award the design contract to S.E.H. for the amount listed in their proposal of $89,700.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion for Max? Go ahead, Mark.
Max, is this a reasonable quote, do you think? I mean, with one bidder, it's a question I think we need to ask.
Yes. And so this is the first time I'm doing this, so I haven't seen other projects of this sort for this type of work. Based on past contracts that we've had with H.C.H. on the modeling for MS4 permits and other analysis they did for us, this seems like a reasonable amount, especially because it includes the design this year, but also the inspection while the work is being done next year. So yes, I believe it's a reasonable amount.
Okay. Thank you, Max.
Anything else? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's Monday, August 7, 2023, and this is a public meeting of the Common Council of the city of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statute. I'd like to ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
I confirm.
Thank you. I invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've recognized a quorum of our council tonight with Alderman Berquist excused absent. We were hoping Alderman Model would join us on the teleconference, and we haven't been able to connect with him, so he may or may not join us tonight. But we do have a quorum. First item of business is a special presentation from the West Bend West volleyball team. And I'm going to start by inviting Erin Felber to the podium to kick this off. Erin is the Athletic Director at West Bend West High School.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I just, before I introduce Coach Deb Bushlick and the girls, I just want to say how proud I am, and on behalf of West Bend West High School, to be here to recognize their hard work, not only on the court, but also in the classroom. You guys are great role models for everybody in the community, so I appreciate that. And let's hear all about their recognition from Coach Debbie Bushlick.
If you guys want to come up right in front of me and face your coach, that way we can get you on TV. Just what you want, right?
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council, for taking the time of your meeting to recognize the 2022 West Bend West volleyball team. The team was selected to the United States Marine Corps and the American Volleyball Coaches Association Team Academic Award. The award initiated in 1992 to 1993 academic year honors volleyball teams that maintain a year-long grade point average of a 3.3. The team finished with an accumulative GPA of a 3.61. Besides being successful in the classroom, we had three players who were also honored for their athletic abilities. The North Shore All-Conference Awards went to Lindsay Saddleback, honorable mention, Megan Spade, Second Team All-Conference, and Kylie Altondorf, First Team All-Conference. The team exhibits the meaning of a true student athlete. At this time, the mayor would like to present each player with a certificate for their achievements. We've got our juniors Clara Corbett, Junior Abby Stockhausen, Sophomore Braylee Eustrock, Sophomore Paige Guzy, Sophomore Kylie Altondorf, and Freshman Emma Miller. The coaching staff of Jimmy Berg, John Menz, Kayla Schomer, and Melissa Wishkerson could not have been more prouder of the team for their hard work in the classroom and on the volleyball court during the year. So congratulations, ladies. There is another player that has been recognized for outstanding student athlete abilities at a national level. The National High School Coaches Association honors the nation's highest student athletes as the high school academic All-American. Sophomore Kylie Altondorf has been named to the 2023 Academic All-American Team. Kylie is an outstanding volleyball player who also excels in the classroom and also on the court. In her 2021 West volleyball season, she earned Second Team All-Conference recognition in the North Shore Conference, and in 2022, she earned First Team All-Conference. Kylie currently has a GPA of a 4.0 and is ranked first in her graduating class. The coaching staff is also excited that Kylie was selected to the National Academic All-American Team, which is a testament to her hard work in the classroom and dedication to volleyball. Congratulations, ladies, on an awesome year, not only on the court, but also in the classroom, and hopefully we will be back here again next year. Thank you.
I'm trying to run back up to my microphone to tell you all how proud we are of you, both on the court and in the community, representing the city of West Bend. Obviously, you represent your team when you're out on the court, but you represent the entire city when you're competing, both on the court and in the classroom. And we're extremely proud of you, and it's an incredible accomplishment, not just to have one or two smart kids on the team, but to have an entire team of smart kids. And so we're very proud of you. It was an honor for us to recognize you tonight, and thank you very much for being here, and congratulations. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to take the public comment item next. That's just a head nod, okay with everybody? And we've, Mr. Jim Schutz has asked if he could address the Common Council tonight, and so, Mr. Schutz, we'll let you take the microphone there.
Well, I'll be brief, but I'd like to thank everyone from the mayor, administrator, right on down, who were involved with the Laurel Drive South project. I'm a registered professional engineer, state of Wisconsin, and I watched the project very closely. I'm not a civil engineer, but when I saw what was going on, I wish I had been. The guys did a great job. Max, great coordination. And Mitch, Lysus, excellent, enjoyed working with you. The Pachinsky Group was very, very impressive. It was almost like an orchestra or an opera, watching these guys work together. And I did want to thank Mother Nature. Yes, it was dry, but then in the end, we got our water necessary for the lawns. Then also, the technology just impressed the dickens out of me to see that we're using GPSs not just for X and Y, but for Z within inches from the satellites 250 miles above us. And that was wonderful to see, the dozers with the blades with a GPS on them and adjusting with the hydraulics very nicely to keep the road nice and graded and smooth. This project was done a month in advance, or finished a month in advance, and it, again, it's very, very impressive. So I want to thank you all for your cooperation, and thank all the workers at Pachinsky for doing a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schutz.
I'd just like to jump on top of his comments and also commend the workers and Max and the city that made the decisions to do that street. My mother lives on the street, and it's been kind of, it was kind of neat to watch all summer long as it progressed. And I was getting the status report regularly, and they were on it, and it looked nice. I drove it down today, and I was like, this is nice. So they did a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Schutz, thank you for your patience and to all of your neighbors, and that's a street that we're happy to get done, and all the praise goes to Max and engineering and planning, and we're thrilled that you're enjoying it. So thank you for being here tonight. I have another item that I'd like to ask the council if it's okay. We have two new employees in the city of West Bend here with us tonight, and I'd like to ask our clerk to introduce some new employees, if that's okay with the council. Again, just a nod. Yes? Great. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure and it's a privilege to introduce. Amy, would you like to stand? Amy, who is our office technician, glad to have her here with us.
You can go just to the podium, and then people can see you, meet you.
Hello.
And we also have our new deputy clerk, Lisa. And we're just very grateful to have you, both of you, and get ready for next year, 2024 elections. Thank you.
Welcome to West Bend. Thank you very much. Thank you all for allowing me to do that. Thank you for being here tonight. Our presentation tonight is, we're at the kind of the start of the budget season, and so our city administrator is going to give us a budget update and kind of progress on the 2024 budget. So Jay, take it away.
Technology-wise, that's my understanding, and this is where it's going to work. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's the time of the year that we start talking about next year's budget. We never really get totally out of budget season with implementing a budget in the current year and then beginning to plan for the subsequent year's budget. This year's budget's not much different from previous years, from an annual budget basis. We try to put out some goals initially. We do provide budget instructions to our department head team and also a timeline. The budget goals that I've included for your review this evening include current level of services. Last year, we added some staff in our fire department, a significant amount of staff. In our planning department, we were able to add a technician as well. I don't anticipate the addition of, I'll say, too many additional positions. I don't believe there's going to be any, although there is a position that we've had unfilled within the city 2023 budget that is likely to be recommended to be filled in 2024, and I'll maybe discuss that in a little more detail in a few minutes. Continue to secure a site for the fire department in addition to working on the rest of the implementation of the fire analysis that we had done. It came up that FS1, our existing main station, has served us well over the years, and it is time to look for a new piece of land. We've had some preliminary conversations. Stay tuned about more information on that in 2024. In addition to that, a significant remodel at Station 2. The tax rate, we, everybody knows we're going through a property assessment, revale process. The last one that we had in West Bend was 2018. It's time to do that again. Prices of homes and commercial and businesses have gone up significantly. Residents can expect, on average, an increase to their assessment, especially if they have not seen one for a while. Forty-nine percent is what our assessor is saying is the amount of increase that we are likely to see. Now, doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up by 50%. It means that the overall assessment is going up, and then the amount that's needed will be levied by the city, and then the rate is set. So the reason I kind of state that third bullet as a reset of the tax rate, in 2018, our tax rate went down significantly. We're likely to see that decline as well in 2024 after the taxes are set based on the amount of need for levy. Those property tax notices are set to go out in a couple of weeks. Residents will receive them, and we'll port some information out to try to reassure residents that they're not going to see a 50% jump in their property tax bill for the next year. Utilize the appropriate amount of net new construction. Our preliminary numbers for net new construction are out from the state, and they are modest, 1.49%. We don't anticipate requesting less than that, so we'll likely request through the recommended budget for 2024, the use of the net new construction available amount. In addition to that, the state shared revenue that recently was signed into law is something that's not new news, but it's exciting news in order to offset some of the increased costs just throughout the 2024's budget. We do have strings attached to those additional state shared revenues that are coming to us. They have to be spent on transportation, public safety, transportation, public safety, or, why am I blanking on the third? Infrastructure, transportation, public works. So public works, I'm sorry, public works, public safety, and infrastructure. Infrastructure sometimes is viewed as public works, but it's, any expenditure within the public works department is the third one. Sorry about that. We will have no problem spending the additional dollars on those three levels of service. We have increased need and demand in all three, and those funds will get chewed up in a very fast manner. The state has held back state shared revenue for so many years, and now with it being increased in 2024 and beyond, we're pretty excited about being able to provide that. Continued to implement the employee compensation plan. We had our compensation plan completed in 2021 for 2022 implementation. Within that initial plan, there were a series of recommendations. One of the recommendations is to try to get existing long-term employees up to the market rate, so the midline of where employees should be. We had to place, because of the significant cost to implement the plan in 2022, we had to place long-term employees as low as the start rate, and we're trying to inch them up. Again, in this budget, we'll take another crack at that by providing long-term employees another percent increase. You can see the merit increase that we're recommending, the cost of living adjustment at 3%. We will increase the entire plan at a 3% level for all employees, and then provide an additional 1%, trying to keep up with inflation. And the CPIU, the cost of living formula that we're using, we don't, we don't get anywhere near what is recommended on a regular basis. It's more than double that for this time of the year right now. But a 4% increase for most employees is something that we feel pretty good about recommending for the 2024 budget and stating as a public goal. And then lastly, the goal of continuing to be recognized by the GFOA. It's a significant honor that the general finance affords municipalities that do a really good job of budgeting, and Carrie Winklebauer and her team and the department head team that we have in place. You all reviewing and asking good questions allows us to get to the distinguished budget award, and one that we're proud of and hope to maintain in 2024 and beyond. We will have some challenges along the way. Street need and alley need is something that's not new to a conversation that this panel has on a regular basis. We have utility infrastructure all of the time within our water and sewer. And then aging buildings, we just had a air compressor or a compressor go through an air conditioning unit at the library this past week, and are dealing with limping one along until we can get the other one replaced. So there's always significant building repairs that are needed on an annual basis. The dark store lawsuit continues. We'll talk about that in a bit in some more detail. Our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, is one that we take very seriously, and this body will have a chance to review over the coming month. The levies, or the tax increment districts on levy is something that we attempt to avoid, and we'll talk a bit more about TIDS and potential challenges with them in a bit. Infrastructure I mentioned, the sustainability plan partnered with the county. Washington County was able to help our engineering department and public works put together this sustainability plan, and now we are trying to implement it. And one of the ways to implement it with the great road need that we have is to secure additional funds, not an easy task to overcome. The council did pursue the advisory referendum this past April, and we're working with the county on attempting to request that they include those funds, those additional sales tax dollars, 20% that was recommended in the advisory referendum and passed by 74% within the city, to have them included and provide additional dollars to construct more roads in 2024 and beyond. Fire department modifications, I already mentioned, the search for land for FS1 and the Station 2 remodel that is recommended in that report. In addition to the other items, will keep us busy for sure in 2024 and beyond. Building maintenance is always something with aging buildings that we need to continue to work on. All of those buildings listed there have significant need. And then the water and sewer utility special projects, we did have some PFAS and shut down a well this past year, which is something that we are taking very seriously. Ruth and her team are working through a corrective action and proposed project on that, one that comes with a pretty significant price tag. I kind of joke with Ruth that all of the projects within her area cost about $5 million. This one's a little bit more than that. And then phosphorus removal within the sewer utility is another $5 million special utility project that Ruth and her team, again, are working on and we're confident can be a fix that's applied in the future. ARPA funding, those $3.3 million that were assigned to the city of West Bend, we've taken serious, seriously the use of those funds, and this body awarded $1 million of them in 20, the use of $1 million of those funds in 2023, and we're anticipating assigning the remaining balance of those $2 million over the next couple of years. Dark story issue is one that's been with us for some time. You can see the second bullet lists the Walmart property lawsuit from 2017 through present. They don't have the 2023 tax bill yet, but we do anticipate being sued again for 2023 as well. These are significant dollars. If the city were to lose one of these lawsuits, it would, it would mean a significant outflow of cash from the city back to the entity, and it would mean that the other taxpayers would have to come up with those dollars moving forward if the property tax assessments were allowed to be significantly lowered. Home Depot is a smaller percent difference. We're only a, again, a smaller portion away from where they are challenging their property tax assessment versus where the city assessor has them assessed at. Walmart is a, I didn't mention that, but Walmart is a significant difference. If we were to lose, quote unquote, "the Walmart case," that would, that would not be good for not only the city of West Bend, but the other taxing entities within Washington County. Freight property tax lawsuit, again, is a property tax lawsuit that they are raising against the city for their assessed value. That one has been going on since 2022 and will likely be named in 2023 as well. And then Cedar Communities is a little different. It's not exactly a dark story issue, but it is regarding property tax exemption. So for the new two-family units that were constructed on the north end of their property within the city of West Bend, they are claiming an exemption or that they should be exempt from property tax, and obviously, the city assessor's department and the city is saying that they, they should be taxed. So we're working through that lawsuit at this time. Some of you remember the Supreme Court Lowe's case that happened this past year, and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities put out an article in a post that said, "Dark store is dead." Well, it's not. It was really good news for municipalities, but it doesn't, it didn't mean that all of the lawsuits went away and that the big-box stores just stopped suing municipalities. The Capital Improvement Plan is a plan that is created in conjunction with the annual budget. This year's amount is 4.173. We have the last few years budgeted for $3 million and spent $2 million on roads, and then $1 million throughout the remaining departments that, that meet and collaborate on a recommended CIP to bring before this body for adoption. In 2023's budget, we were able to add $1 million of ARPA money that I already mentioned, and then an additional $173,000 to complete the beach house project from funds on hand. So we use some funds in a closeout account to complete that project. We're really excited to have that one done, and so a more significant 4.1 million compared to the 3 million that we are projecting for in 2024, except adding ARPA money again gets us backed up to the $4 million. So we anticipate bringing a roughly $4 million, again, recommendation of a 2024 CIP to you. We have a lot of need. Department heads take this very seriously. They work together. It's not always easy because there is need for equipment to be replaced and need for municipal buildings to be fixed, and it's, it's just tough to squeeze all of those into a $1 million pot where they all compete for. But we, we do our best to bring that to you in a, in the most collaborative fashion and keeps the city functioning the best as possible. Always are challenged with pursuing other options for road funding. We do make applications for grants. Some of them are more realistic, like ones administered through the state, STIP and county funds, versus the more federal road projects where the competition is fierce. Doesn't mean we don't apply for them, but it, it just means that the chances of receiving them are more slim. And then I already mentioned prioritization significantly. We hope to never be on tax on levy again, but every once in a while, the TIDS work out where they do need to have a little bit of levy payment. Historically, our TIDS were lacking, and we had a significant amount of general fund, which means the non-TID taxpayers, tax incremental finance district taxpayers, had to pay money to, tax money to fund shortfalls within those tax incremental finance districts. They have now come to a point where they are successful, most of them are successful, and we are repaying the general fund and the levy accordingly. So not only are we paying the general fund on an annual basis for the next seven to nine years or so, we will also be repaying the sewer utility. years or so, we will also be repaying the sewer utility, some funds that they had to put forward out of utility coffers in order to put in infrastructure, and we're, again, a fortunate position to be able to recommend repayment of that in 2024 and beyond. We hadn't created TIDS in a long time. We had some failing TIDS and some slow progressing TIDS, and now we're in a position where we've created three of them in the last four years. It's been a busy time in the development area and some pretty exciting times to see the new construction going on throughout the city. TID 16 is our latest one, created in early 2023 on Sand Drive, and we're hopeful that you'll see some new construction, working on the first building there in the next month or so. Development shortfall repayments are similar to the repayment to the general fund and the sewer utility. As TIDS lagged in the past, developers had to fund and write checks to the city, and as those TIDS are now successful, they're starting to see their dollars back, and they're being repaid through the success of TIDS. Some next steps ahead. Our department team continues to work through the budgets. They will be presenting their budgets internally to finance department and myself in the next month. As we continue to build those and present back to you, answer any questions that you have throughout the way. We appreciate any feedback that you have. I know the mayor's going to ask for comments, questions in the next couple of minutes, but please don't hesitate to reach out to ask. I do ask that if you have a question in advance of a council meeting, that you reach out to the department and/or to myself, finding out what that information is, and then we can report back that we received a bunch of questions and that we are reporting out to the whole group as well. So don't ever think that you're bothering us by asking a question about what's being proposed or what you might have been wondering about in past budget years. Please ask, and we'll work hard to get those answers to you. Health insurance premiums, just FYI that we haven't received them yet as far as what our self-insurance recommendation is going to be for 2024. Did include the timeline for you. Phil always does a great job. Phil Kasten's going to be here at our next meeting and present on debt and our TID health or the future of our TIDS. We will have the formal budget presentation on October 9, and then we'll have a two-week period of time where, I mentioned, you can ask questions and review what you've received on the 9th in a formal manner and share those questions in advance so that we have the 23rd to update, provide an update to you. And then looking way down ahead, the 2024 budget adoption is scheduled for our one meeting in November, on November 13. Are there any questions, comments, thoughts at this time? Not meant to be a significant amount of detail, but yet just a heads up that your team's working on it, takes the budget process seriously, and is prepared to answer any questions that you have.
I have one, and I don't know if you'll be able to comment on it or not, because it's kind of an ongoing lawsuit. But you mentioned Walmart, Home Depot, Freighter, and if they are successful, we owe them money back in revenue that we've collected. Has Cedar Community paid any taxes since the completion of their two-story or their two-family condos? In other words, if we win that lawsuit, do they owe us? Could that be revenue coming in to us from prior years?
Yeah, I don't believe so. I believe it's the other way, Ian.
Yep. They were assessed and taxed, and that's what they're challenging. So unless they're delinquent on their property taxes, which I don't think they are, they have paid, it would be a chargeback.
It's the same as the others.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
And maybe just to clarify, there are statutory exemptions for entities like Cedar Community. This challenge is over and above that, and you're right, I don't want to get into the details of the potential lawsuit, but there are taxes that Cedar pays, and there are taxes that they don't pay because of the statutory exemption.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think Jay did a nice job there on one of the last pages where he said that if there are questions between now and really the end of October, don't be shy to reach out, call Jay. If it's a department question, he may point you to a department head, but we need to make sure that everybody on the council is being heard by, between now and the end of October. Waiting until November is going to be too late to ask questions on the budget. They're putting it together literally as we speak, and so don't be shy to reach out if you have any questions on the direction the budget is going. Now's the time.
Thank you.
Again, this is a discussion item tonight, and we'll see the budget as it progresses here in the next few months. Thank you very much for that, Jay. All right. Our next item of business is our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda is awarding, quote, "23-06 Storm Pond retrofit projects."
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, and thank you for the second, Alderman Zingshine. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our first report is the bid board meetings on July 11 and August 1.
I'm just going to do all the reports. How's that?
You're going to do all of them, the library board and tourism commission.
Library board is excused because the...
Mr. Butchlick is gone, or Berquist is absent.
Mr. Berquist is absent.
So you'll have all of them tonight.
I'll do all the ones that are going to happen tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Bid board met on July 11. We reviewed and approved the minutes of the bid board meeting on June 6. Todd Dorner of Dorner Construction provided an update on the Main Street reconstruction project and took questions. There were not many. There was a financial report made and approved. The board reviewed and approved updates to the bid board bylaws to reflect municipal code chapter 1. We did those in council, so the bids bylaws now match the change to the bylaws that we did here in council. The marketing committee met ahead of the bid board meeting and to begin discussions on grand reopening event. Number of ideas were discussed, and continued conversations will take place tomorrow at 7:30 a.m. here in City Hall. And part of the downtown master plan is a project that's being done by Grafe, is a downtown business stakeholder survey, and downtown businesses are encouraged to share their ideas and feedback on the website. Any questions on the July 11 bid board meeting? Next up is bid board meeting for August 1. We reviewed and approved the minutes from the bid board meeting July 11. A financial report was made and approved. Clara Rolfs expressed that there is some desire from the local private sector leaders to invest in additional design enhancements to the Main Street reconstruction project. Bid board president Mike Husar presented a PowerPoint documenting the concerns on the Main Street reconstruction project, and two vendors presented ideas and options for downtown holiday decorations on 150 streetlights and the two white bridges, also on the Riverwalk and some additional locations. Board approved up to $35,000 to be spent on the new decor. There is a subcommittee that's meeting to deal with that process. Any questions on the August 1 bid board meeting? Next up is the tourism commission meeting from July 18. We reviewed and approved the minutes from the tourism commission meeting of May 16, and then we reviewed and approved a $20,000 grant for a new major event to visit West Bend. Details for that will be forthcoming. We also discussed a, and I hope I don't get this wrong, it's a state grant for cooperative event funding. And then we also discussed and achieved one volunteer for the state fair booth that was today, hence the "Visit West Bend" t-shirt. And so that was great. There was a lot of interest in West Bend. A lot of people are, were saying, "Oh, we're holding off to go to West Bend till the construction's complete." Well, I hope I convinced at least some of them to not wait. So it was very positive. I must admit that the shift before us stole our thunder and gave away all the really good stuff. So all we had were "Visit West Bend" pamphlets. But that's it. Any questions on the tourism commission? Oh, we don't want to forget this. Once again, we said goodbye and thanked for his service, Max Selinian, who is the business representative to the tourism commission. So you'll have an appointment coming up soon, I think.
Max served well and is moving out of West Bend for some other opportunities. Great, great young man.
Yep. We had thought that we were done with Max at the May 16 meeting. Boy, were we fooled. So Max got to come back, do one more meeting with us. Hopefully, he's now done.
Thank you, Alderman Allen.
Thank you.
We'll hear about the library board meeting on July 18 when Alderman Berquist is back. Were there any other announcements for the good of the order? Alderman Allen?
Couple of things. First of all, the downtown reconstruction is coming on just swimmingly. I was down there with out-of-town guests, and we did a fish fry Friday night, and after the fish fry, which we had no trouble getting to, and it was great. Kudos to, I forgot the name of the place. Brazenhead, yeah. How could I forget that? We took a walk around, and the curb and gutter is covering now half of the street. It looks great. It's got, you know, complex curves, and they look good. I mean, they don't kind of like, "Oh, we tried to put that curve here." It's nice, continuous gutter. It looks good. The flatwork, the actual paving was at that point completed up by cherry pickings at the extreme north end of Main Street, and it looked really good. And my wife has informed me that social media is giving it at least two thumbs way up. So downtown is looking good, and so use your time wisely. Eat downtown, shop downtown.
You bet. Lot of nice events coming up. I'm not going to be able to name them all, but Cash Bash, Chalk Fest, Guitars for Vets, Wheels on Main. Although it feels like summer is quickly ending, there's still a lot of great events going on around the city. Want to give a special thanks to Mike Yench and our police and fire departments. We did have a gas break on the construction project that could have been very, very bad, but because of a very, very quick response by several people and police, fire, Mike, that was kind of a disaster averted as far as a safety concern, and so it was a quick response, and thank you very much for looking out for the safety of the public in that situation. So anybody else? If not, we have no more business before the common council, and I will adjourn. Have a great evening.